Is there anything to present? Is anyone here to speak on the budget?
I think Mr. Speaker. No, sir, we go.
The speaker.
Mr. Edg, taking over speaking on that.
John's not here, he was gonna do it. John, John's not. That was Jerry yesterday, he didn't say anything about. I think he did, I think he told Scott.
Ah, oh, too bad. Just right there at the end.
Probably kids getting out of school.
Moms and dads and all that.
We'll begin the work session tonight for May fourth at five oh five. And Dr. Spence, I'll turn it over to you for items of information.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Griner for the FY twenty-four budget update.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Spence. Presented initial numbers back in, at the April work session. These are some updated numbers. Not a whole lot of, we did get our, our QBE alignment from the state, we got our midterm adjustment. We, we have kind of preliminary number for next year, but it's not a final, it shouldn't change too much. So we'll talk about that in a minute. One thing I did do, I felt like after we got the, kind of the initial digest, which we won't get a final digest until August, that probably an eight percent increase is still conservative, so I bumped that up to eight percent. And then we'll talk through what that means in a minute. I really feel like it's probably going to end up being higher than that, but we really don't have enough good numbers yet to determine that. And I left the millage rate where it was reduced to last year at fifteen point six five mils for right now. Again, that'll be set in August. So we'll just get to the, let's see, get to the summary. So if we back, back out, you can see with the eight percent increase, we're looking at an increase in local taxes a little over six million. The QBE increase projected for next year is about two point six million. Most of that is for the health insurance increase and the state salary increase. Our local five mil share did go up, which is typical. You've got a digest that's rising, we have to give that five mils back to the state through the QBE alignment. So that's, that's why that number is, is only two and a half million. Right there, so you see total revenues projected at about one hundred and sixty seven point five, a little over that. We've got all the mandated state increases, which is through the governor's budget. State salary increases, we did those at certified at the school level, mentioned that back in April. Drivers, custodians, and nurses are also in the governor's budget for next year. Then the insurance increase for certified and for classified. Classified kicks in January one of next year, certified is starting off July one, it's actually retroactive back to January of this year. We're getting most of that back through QBE for certified, we get no, no funding from the state for classified health insurance. That totally comes out of our local budget, which is mostly our property taxes. Step increases for certified and non-certified. New positions, we have thirty-two new positions, we did mention that last time, those are at the school level. Riff positions, those are, positions we're moving back to the school level, those are our coordinator positions. I think Dr. Spence may have mentioned that back in, maybe in April. It's really a total of five and a half positions, three and a half of those are funded through the general fund, so that's the number you see there. Those, those employees are not losing their job, they're just moving back to the school level or to other departments. Decreasing department budgets, most of that is the literacy curriculum that we adopted last year, we won't have moving forward next year, that's the biggest change. And then I know Mrs. Sales has mentioned the childcare centers, so we felt like first year, we're definitely not going to break even on those, so we feel like we're gonna have to have some subsidy from the general fund, and I just conservatively put two hundred thousand in there for that. So total expenditures, one, one sixty-six point seven. So right now, we're showing a surplus, revenues over expenditures of a little over nine hundred thousand. Again, once we get the QBE numbers, when we have the next update, June first, that number may change a little bit, but I don't foresee any of these other numbers changing. Again, the millage rate, we'll have a final digest normally around the first or second week in August, and then can determine what the millage rate will be and kind of get a true picture. You know, should be around the nine hundred thousand and make some decisions on where the digest comes in after that.
It's important to remember that the, the, the health insurance for certified, for classified personnel is going to continue to go up each year until it gets to where the health insurance is for the certified, so we'll have to pay more each year.
Yes, that is a very good point.
For the next three years.
Right. The original proposal in the governor's budget was to, I think, start January one and do the full amount. I think either the House or Senate, I can't remember now, came back with kind of a compromise, because I think they got a lot of pu- a lot of pushback and feedback from school districts saying that's too much of an increase at one time. So they, they came up with a plan, they'd do it over a three-year phase in, so this FY twenty-four will be the first year of that. I'll be, there's supporting documents behind all this that I will, I mean, I wanted to get over the summary, but if y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Griner.
Thank you.
I'm Mr. Blackerby, facilities update.
I just talked, quick run-through of the current East Plus projects we have that are underway. The, on East Plus Three, the Golden Academy Gym renovations are, we're in full swing with that right now, with our target, first target date of July first to be able to occupy the gym floor, and then August first to be able to reoccupy the locker room areas. So far, it has been a fairly smooth project. It had no supply chain issues or, or labor issues so far with the project. I was in there today, and the toilet partitions and a lot of the other items that we need to complete the project are already arriving, so right now we see, see no issues with the schedule and, and being able to, to meet our, our targets of July first and, and August first. Another big project we have with East Plus Three, which you'll, you'll see a, a GMP proposed tonight, is that's for the demolition of the Eggmont Street building, the old Board of Education building, and the creation of the parking lot there. We do have the, the final drawings and the engineering done on that project. Still waiting on some final permitting from the EPD for the demolition part of that, as, as well as some approvals on the, the stormwater drainage. But overall, we have a good plan there. I believe we're increasing from seventy-seven student parking spaces of what we previously had there to a hundred and sixty-two will be the, the gain on that. So we, it'll be a much better situation, much, much closer to campus for the students to park and, and be able to access that mains, main gate of the campus. And again, we'll see a GMP for that in a moment. One of the final things in East Plus Three is the performing arts. Just to give you a quick update on that, we have been discussing in our planning meetings, three design concepts, and that's been narrowed down to primarily one. That is going before the Board of Regents within the week for a dis- they have to approve the, the concept design that is being discussed at this point. And once that's approved, then we'll move into the schematic design phase of that. So we should have something to share in the very near future about kind of what direction that building's going in. But, so things are moving, moving with the performing arts, but we're still, still several months out before having, you know, a true schematic design of, of what the building is truly going to look like. But things are, things are finally moving with the performing arts. On East Plus Four, St. Simon's is the big one, we have, working on that right now. We're in the middle of phase four, which is the construction of the new gym, admin area, and kitchen. The, both the admin area and kitchen, they have the walls up, putting the joist in now, getting ready to put the, the roof on those. Still working on the underslab masonry on the gym. But again, things are, are moving fairly well there with the, with St. Simon's. We do have some considerable summer work there to install some new sewer lines in the old building before the students reenter. We want to go ahead and get that work done, so we, we have a pretty tight summer schedule. We'll be moving the admin out of their offices, because we've essentially got to dig through the front office and out the front door to install the new sewer line. So we, we hope to start, start that as soon as the students leave the building, so we can get the floor put back in and be ready for the start of, of school in August. And Needwood and, and Oglethorpe, the remaining work there is the kitchen renovations, which we're going to be starting, the, the Oglethorpe kitchen renovation, we're going to vacate the kitchen on, the current kitchen on May twelfth and be ready the, that, that weekend to start doing demolition in there, so we can get a head start on that. And in Needwood, we're working on trying to get a couple of days head start there as well, so that we can make sure we meet our end of the summer deadline. Satilla Marsh, we are working towards starting site work and some building pad development there this summer. Again, we'll have a GMP to present for that in, in just a few moments. Any question on any of the projects?
Can we start, I mean, if, we're still trying to move forward with the childcare thing for next year? Can we add that as like an ongoing line item to report on every meeting until, I mean, and the school's almost out, it's gonna be on us before we know it?
Yeah.
From facilities or from, you know, management, however you want to do it? And the other thing is with the, with the new parking lot at the old board office, I think we'd all agree, we'd want to, to do whatever we can to help. The partners have been so great to us over the years for First Baptist and Shiloh and other places in the area. So is this something that's going to take an MOU to make sure that they know they can use the parking lot, if that's what you want to do? Or if it's like, hey, give us a heads up if you have a big funeral, or, I mean, I, you know, I don't know how, is it just going to be like, hey, let us know if you need to use the parking lot?
I mean, we could do it, but I, but I think we have a good enough relationship, we could just do it by just, you know, just.
Okay.
When I was at Glenn, they would just come and tell me, we've got a funeral, make sure your kids don't park there, and I would send the SRO out there, and they would keep them from parking, or they'd put cones down.
Right.
There's a pretty good relationship there.
Good Report, of course, has the summary of the projects on there, but probably the most interesting piece is our receipts for, for this, for the, for the past month, which we were at three point two million, which was, I believe, if the records are correct, we, that's about one of the fourth highest collections we've had to date with East Plus. And with the conservative two million dollar estimate that we currently have penciled in on the cash flow for receipts, even with that very conservative estimate, because we haven't even been close to, to two million yet on the collections, we are looking at easily meeting the hundred and twelve million mark by December of twenty twenty-four. Mr. Griner, I, we're talking last night, and I, I mean, we, we really believe that could actually be backed up to probably the middle of next summer, as far as we, we may meet that hundred and twelve million mark. If, because the three point two represents what we had pretty much during the springtime, I predict we'll, we'll have even higher numbers in, in June or July, just with the summer travel. Any questions on Good Report?
Michelle, you want to talk a little bit about childcare, just briefly?
Okay.
You don't have to.
We've been talking.
Yeah, we've been talking about it. We're working diligently with Miss Stephanie Thompson, Miss Miller is also a part of it as well, along with Mary Beth Brothers, who works in our office. Mary Beth is a former director of human resources for Bryan County Schools, and they launched it while she was there, so that's why she's a part of that committee. We have gone and done a, an actual site visit at Francis Meeks Elementary School in Bryan County and was able to observe there. We've also talked with the nutrition department about feeding our students. We're looking to have two sites for next school year. Looking at one site at Faces Elementary School, Faces Pre-K Center, excuse me, and Altama Elementary School. Initially, we were looking at one, but we felt like we want to have a few more spots for our staff members. It will only be for Bryan County School staff as well. Today, we met with the curriculum company, because we want to have high-quality curriculum for those students, who'll be, for those children who will be in those classes. Of course, decal has a lot to do, has everything to do with childcare. And so I've been working with Mr. Blackerby in regards to ensuring that we've got the rooms that we need and making sure the bathrooms that are there too. The only thing that we're working on now is to determine how many sinks we need in the classrooms. Because of course, with childcare, you've got to make sure you've got enough sinks. We believe we'll have that because of the bathrooms and the sinks that are already inside of the classroom. We're looking at hiring four or five people per site. You kind of have to have a swing person to be there to make sure someone's there early in the morning and late in the afternoon until five o'clock in the afternoon, so teachers will have that. The, the calendar that we're looking at is a hundred and ninety-five day calendar, so that, so that our staff can get there five days before, where they'll do a mandatory CPR, first day training, along with curriculum training as well too. And also, we're looking at possibly doing a camp day, where parents can bring their children for one day before they actually come. And so the actual services, services will be provided to staff members during pre-planning all the way up to post-planning, and will be closed in the summer. I'll do a better job next month.
Just, no, it's fine, I just, you know, I just wanted, from a facility standpoint, just have an update and stuff like that, but it's fine. You know, what about application process, like how do you?
We're going to do a waitlist, a waitlist is coming in about two weeks. We recently posted for the actual worker positions, for the lead teacher and assistant teachers.
Got you, okay, cool, thank you.
Mr. Griner, financials?
Yes, sir, thank you, Dr. Spence. You have before you the financials as of the end of March. No budget amendments during the month of March, so I'm going to go to the general fund. Statement of revenues and expenditures. We are still very positive on all our trends. Eighty-six point seven percent of revenue, so right on target there. Should be at seventy-five percent on our expenditures, we're at sixty-six point nine. So all the trends are positive there. I think we'll, we'll definitely have a, a surplus at the end of this fiscal year, twenty-three. So then that decision, you know, will be made again, whether to, in years past, where that money's been put into local capital projects. Our fund balance, you know, I didn't point this out in the budget, I think with the FY twenty-four budget, we're looking at a little over eighteen percent, if it stays based on the budget. So and again, the state, anything over fifteen, I mean, you can have over fifteen, they haven't really been pushing that as much as they used to. But used to, fifteen percent was that, about the limit. Once you got above fifteen, they, they liked, they didn't like for you to have much more than that in fund balance. So, but all the trends are positive on the financials. I'm going to go to the investments, and then if y'all have questions, we can definitely go back. Investment analysis, the Federal Reserve actually raised rates again yesterday, so continues to. Short-term rates are still really good, over five percent for six months. Some of these, you know, we bought earlier, our yields are in the four forty-five, four fifty. We've got, you know, Mr. Blackerby pointed out with East Plus Three, we've got the performing arts money is basically what makes up that twenty-three and a half million, as that project continues to move along. We've got that, most of that money, are all that money invested. East Plus Four, thirty-two point seven million. What's happening with East Plus Four is our receipts are pretty much paying for our monthly expenditure right now. So as we get receipts, what I'm trying to do is keep investing those, because we're, we're in a good position. I've got a cushion in there to cover our expenditures right now. Roughly, our expenditure is running anywhere from two to, two and a half million, and our receipts are definitely covering that. So we're in a, a very good position on East Plus Four to keep investing that money. You see for March, our total interest was four hundred and thirty-three thousand. On the East Plus, a little over two oh six for April, it's a little bit higher than that, it's about two sixteen. So and on the general fund so far, we've got six hundred and eighty-three thousand through March, and that'll continue on through about August. Those investments are carried out through August, and that's when our cash flow in the general fund kind of gets to that level where you really can't invest. That's, not that we're at a, a bad posi- it's just it gets to the point where we need that just to maintain. And then once we get our tax money, you know, October, November, then we can invest again. It's typical of every school district, that's just the way the cash flow works on the general operating. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, on either one, the financials or the investments.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. Schwartz.
Just, it's the same, got a slight increase this year. This is for all of our security cameras and access control, the card readers, proxy readers all around the most outside doors now. So all the new schools have the access cards, but this is for software updates for all the cameras. The NVRs, network video recorders that record all the activity on the security cameras. And also, it's for upgrades and replacements and onsite support from the vendor. We currently have over seventeen hundred cameras, and there's a constant need for repairs and adjustments and cleanings. For this money that we pay them, or I'm asking you to agree to pay them, they come out every three months, do a complete system update, they help update firmware on all the servers. And like I said, they do all the break fixes and warranty repairs for us.
Any questions for Mr. Schwartz?
Yes, sure.
I've got a question. In a typical, is there a amount that's typically down with our security cameras at any given time? Like whether it be a five percent, cameras that aren't working district-wide?
At any given time, it's usually just a handful of them, they fix them really quick, usually. There's usually two technicians from this, or a company in Glen County, at Glen County. There's usually two technicians from this or a company in Glenn County, at Glenn County Schools most days of the week. So they pretty much supplement my staff by bringing people in town, and they, they have people here on a daily basis. But to answer your question directly, I haven't done a study of a percentage that are down at any given time, but it's a very small percentage. And they're usually repaired within a couple of days, most times.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you. Dr. Whitehead?
Yes, sir, thank you, good afternoon, everyone. The first item, item C that's listed, is our annual Infinite Campus renewal item. That quote will be posted, I'm waiting on a revision on the, some of the items that were on there, but the amount that you see is, is accurate for that annual re-renewal, which is the amount of $116,596. That includes the licenses for Infinite Campus, to include all the, the usage we get from personnel using it, as well as parent portal usage, and the cloud hosting of that software. And then, the last item that is on that invoice includes the link between Infinite Campus and Google Classroom, so that that learning management system speaks nightly to Infinite Campus. And so just asking for a renewal of that system that has served us well for state reporting and for the activities that we need to complete.
Thank you, you can move on to the RFP.
Yes, sir, so the RFP information, Mrs. Britt has an additional handout that'll come around to let you see some numbers on that. We issued this RFP in response to flexibility that we now have as a school district to seek other options to provide services to our students with significant emotional behavior disorders. For reference point, that's our Coastal Academy population, and that has been something that the state has operated, the GNets, the Georgia Network of Educational Therapeutic Services. And those have been operated by our RESSAs around the state. Interestingly enough, when the FY '23 budget was first drafted, there was no line item at all for GNets. They had cut that out. There have been concerns growing around that service delivery model. And due to the fact that no one had been given advance notice to plan, the state, the governor reinstated the budgeting for GNets for this current year that we're in. Essentially, there was discussion in the legislative session 2022, asking for recommendations around how to serve those students best, and put systems essentially on notice to start investigating how we would serve those students if the funding went away for GNets, as it, as it's been known to us. And so we had our own local committee that met, Dr. McKinnon and I met with Dr. Green, Mrs. Miller, Mrs. Haywood, Mrs. Seals, and Mr. Greiner on several occasions to review what our concerns have been, and then to talk about if we could design a program that we thought would be in the best interest of that group of students, what would it look like? And so we began investigating that, doing some research, and trying to determine if indeed that type of program existed. Through our research, we discovered that CSE, which is Specialized Education Services Incorporated, who we have visited for other things, for alternative programs in other counties, that they actually had a facility in Pensacola, Florida, that they were operating, that served that exact population for that, for Scambia County in Florida. And so Dr. McKinnon and I made a site visit to be able to see if indeed that looked like what we all had discussed would be what we would hope to have for our students. And so we've done that research, we put an RFP out, we had two responses with all of the things outlined that we had hoped to have. And you'll see that we had a bid in from CSE, which is that top bid, and then we had a bid from Spectrum Center. The main differences behind what you'll see in, if you were to look at the proposals, CSE operates with the mindset that students not only need to receive the therapeutic supports and the behavioral interventions to, to be better students in the classroom, but that they can't neglect the academic side. And that's something that has been a major concern for all of us, is our students' inability to be successful transitioning, because they've lacked that academic component. And CSE operates with a direct instruction model. They have teachers teaching in those classrooms, and, and computers are used, but it's all supplemental, just like you would see in a general education classroom setting. In the Spectrum proposal, they are computer-based, individual computer-based. And so there's still not that, how am I going to act in a group setting with a teacher trying to teach? We would be missing that component as well with them. Dr. McKinnon and I both reached out to references for both companies. We received positive remarks from CSE, in addition to asking around from those, they were only given an opportunity to submit three, but in addition to that, we have different experience with the Spectrum reference research. So the money that would go to fund this, for this next year, because they didn't end up changing the funding model, would be, to our understanding, First District RISA would remain the fiscal agent and receive the GNets funding from the state, and then they would send the money to us to fund the program, because the state is funding the support for this group of students. And then moving forward, the plan is that there will be a new QBE formula that will be for students that are coded for this level of service. And so as a school system, we would then directly receive QBE funding. And so the request is to allow us to move forward with CSE as a program provider for that group of students that qualify to be served in that setting. And if we get approval for that next Tuesday, we would be ready to start. They are ready to begin recruitment. And Dr. McKinnon and I have also met with the staff that's currently at Coastal Academy. After talking with Dr. Spence and Mrs. Seals about options, the staff was told that at a minimum, they would have an opportunity to work with Glenn County Schools, but they certainly will have an opportunity to apply with CSE if they want to continue working with that same population and that same group of students. And CSE has also responded to discussion that we've had, that they are definitely open to interviewing any of those staff members that are interested. They do their own professional learning and onboarding. They have a pretty intensive professional learning component for people coming onboard with them. And so their staff would start before our staff would start back to work this summer. And so having the lead time to identify those staff members and get that training in place is really essential at this point. I don't know if you have any, any questions around what we're trying to accomplish?
I, I do. So in essence, we're subbing these services out to another company?
Yes, we, but to also be clear, that has always been the case. So the teaching staff at Coastal Academy fall under First District RISA. They have, they're, they're not our staff, and they're not our, they're our students, but that's really the only component, the only input that we've had over there.
Right. Now, is the CSE, uh, state-approved?
Yes, and they are accredited by Cognia as well.
My concern is when I hear something like this, subbing out, and I understand about First District RISA and all that, but my first, is this the ombudsman of the IEP or Behavioral Intervention? You know, because we got caught up in an ombudsman program years ago, and it just didn't turn out well.
Right.
You know?
Which is why we have tried to examine it from all aspects of transitioning students in, transitioning students out. Our feedback so far has been that districts that have been partnering with them have expanded programming year after year with them, so that they've increased the services that they have asked CSE to provide.
How long have they been in business?
Um, I can tell you that, um, quite some time, but, um, I don't want to confuse it with the other one.
First District RISA will fund this for this year, but then you say, QBE's supposed to be changed, but we've been hearing that for a long time.
Well, they're getting the money from, they're getting the money from the government. See, whenever they started this whole GNets process, they said that the GNets will, will take these over, and so they're getting the money from the state government. All they're doing is turning around and giving it to us now.
Right, right, for that first year. But then, as we go on, these services will still be needed.
And they'll probably send the money straight to us instead of through.
Through, if the QBE gets changed, that's a big if.
Right, I think it's actually in, in the legislation, how the, the funding formula will change, and they've outlined the leveling in FTE and what that would look like. So we, we've kind of had a glimpse into what the funding change looks like for money income, based on that change.
So are they taking that money eventually away from First District RISA, or the RESSAs, and giving it straight to?
Correct.
Across the state?
Correct.
Okay.
That, that line item in the state budget for GNets, which has never really operated off of the same QBE formula that, that we have for everything else, they essentially have given them an average of years of the students, and then like a block grant, you get this much money. And that's going away.
Two or three years down the line, we still, we're stuck with a one and a half million dollar, you know, bill, that we were told, hey, this is supposed, this was supposed to change, and it didn't.
Right, I, I think the thing to also keep in mind, though, is that regardless we've been put on notice, we have to figure out how we're going to provide services. And I think it's, it's going to entail the type of delivery that we're seeing proposed in, in what we have presented to us, but. Dr. McKinnon, do you have?
Just a couple of things, I've already been directed by the state to send Vicki Cleveland, who is with the Georgia Department of Education, over GNets. Our letter basically of intent to acquire those funds from GNets and not keep it with them to operate, because of the need for improvement that we've been seeing. But also to address your ombudsman question, one of the selling points for me with CSE is primarily their intent to come in and incorporate their operations with our procedures. Whereas we haven't had as much control over that in the past, and in ombudsman, we adapted to their way of doing this. And this is the opposite of that, from what we've gathered. They will staff it, but they will adopt our procedures and policies as we operate in our schools. As far as attendance, discipline, all of those things.
When I see a private organization wanting to come into our schools, I don't necessarily want them making money off of our children, I want them providing the best services for our children.
Right, right.
They definitely have a reputation of being evidence-based. This is the same company that we went to observe in here, in the Herring School of Schools, that we called at right beginnings of after. And we, we eventually hope to create a continued services where right beginning is obviously a form for in, will fall somewhere under this particular program as well, because they, that program expanded in hearing. It's phenomenal if you had an opportunity to observe it. And so there, there is evidence that shows that the model that they have works, the type of students that they serve. We have not been effective at transforming, providing them the proper services to. And we've seen in other districts where those students have had success, and the state has, so. I do think it's a reputable program.
And I hope so, I do, because these students really need the services and the help, any services and help we can provide. And a bunch of those other ombudsman, there's other programs that we eventually found out we could do pretty much the same in-house and provide those services in, at a more efficient manner down the line, you know? And if that's the case, if we need some help getting this started, if we see that later on, I would explore that.
Right, another kind of way to think about it, and something we can certainly bring back to the board when we get it, is that CSE has built-in internal controls to make sure that they are meeting the quality of program, that they have basically proposed or advertised. And so they will have a benchmark in early fall to make sure that they have met all of the onboarding and the entry points that they have promised. Their main administrative group will come in and evaluate, and then they will meet with district staff to report on where they stand and what, any corrections they think they need to make. And then they will do that again in the spring to include their academic programming and other things along that line, to make sure that they are hitting all their marks, that they have, that they have proposed that they will meet. So again, that's something that we didn't see in, in the other programs, and that we haven't had an experience of being able to get that direct feedback on, you know, basically scrutinizing what you're doing, and, and that you're doing what you say you're going to do for these students. Because we, we, that was something for sure that we all, you know, noticed right away, is that we, this is definitely probably one of our most vulnerable populations in the district, and they, they need extensive support.
Right.
It's encouraging that they recruit the human resources and provide the training to them that we've kind of had lacking in our current program. Not enough staff and well-trained is what we would like to see. So we're encouraged that that's a huge part of theirs, and we fully expect them to bring to us leaders that have been successful in starting up a program in other areas. Because they recruit nationwide, but we have, we, that's what the impression is that they're giving us, that they will offer those who have been successful in implementing a program in a new facility.
So would these staff members be employed by CSE? Would they still get the same benefits or anything as, you know, a certified employee, like through the state or anything like that, or that would just solely be through them? They would get paid and their benefits would be through CSE?
Right, and that's somewhat similar to how it's been as well, you know, with the current staffing. So the salary schedules and things like that have been somewhat, somewhat different. But, you know, definitely can provide whatever information off of that you're interested in as well. And Mrs. Haywood had, gone to their homepage, and I think founded in 1976 as an organization. Their first incorporation in the state of Georgia was in 2017, and I think that's when they started with Henry and DeKalb Counties in, in the state.
Any other questions for Dr. Whitehead?
Yes, sir, and then the final item is the annual renewal for Power School items that we use as that comes open for, you know, the renewal period this summer as well. And this is the platform we use that houses all of our data in one place for access by our school teams and district teams to, to review. We administer common district assessments through that platform, and teachers have access to look at individual student data, as well as administer classroom assessments. That's that top line that you see. The second line, Mrs. Seals' department uses for classified employee evaluations. So if there are questions on that. And then the third item that you see on that, this will be our final year using that particular module in the Performance Matters section of Power School, because we are transitioning to the state's Go MTSS model in SLDS, which the state is providing at no charge to districts. And so this next year, we will complete the transition of all of that data over for students that are being followed for that process in MTSS. And so that last slide item, this will be the last year that we will have that on the invoice.
All right, Ms. Daniel, tell us about the meal prices.
Good evening, this is the recommendation for our meal prices for the 23-24 school year. What I did, the only recommendation for change is in, highlighted in the green, but I did a chart, so you can see kind of where we are and the reason for that recommendation. So in breakfast, all of our students eat at no charge, no cost to the student, but we get $2.67 for reimbursement. So this highlighted space in each of these breakfast, lunch, and snack show what the government says it costs to serve the meal. And that's what they reimburse us for, for a student that's in the free eligibility. So if we go to lunch, those are the, the only place where recommendations are for change, we get $4.43 for federal reimbursement for a lunch. And for a reduced student, this reduced student pays 40 cent, we get $4.03 for reimbursement, which gets us to the $4.43. Currently, right now, we're charging $2.20 for our paid students for lunch. And we get 87 cent federal reimbursement. So our reimbursement rate is only getting us to 3.37. So we're recommending, um, to go from 2.50 to 2.75, which will get us closer to what the, um, plate cost is on a reimbursement for our meals. And then of course, with food costs going up, we're looking at our adult meals as well. Right now, we pay, um, we charge $4 for our adult lunch. And we're recommending, um, we get no reimbursement, obviously, for an adult lunch. And we're recommending to go to $4.50 to cover the cost. So that would cut, we're not going up at, at, um, breakfast. We're going up a little bit more than what the reimbursement rate is just for change, the mere decision for making change, um, for, as they pay for a meal. But we're not going to go up on breakfast for adults and kind of make, and the difference be there in what we would make for lunch. Any questions? So in summary, we're asking to increase the student paid lunch from $2.50 to 2.75. And the adult paid lunch or student second meal from $4 to 4.50.
Thank you. Edgenuity, Dr. Green?
Yes, it's time to do our annual renewal for Edgenuity platform that we use for credit renewal, um, credit recovery as well as our Glen Virtual Academy. We also use it for modified math and lit with our academy art students. With me, it, it's not obviously the most, but we have used it for them as well. So it's our, it's time to just renew that particular contract for, yeah, there is that contract for our students. Um, next year, we are still going to continue Glen Vir- virtual as, thank you.
Sorry, y'all know I have that monotone voice, I'm sorry, it's low. Um, so this is our contract, our quote for, um, Imagine Learning, which is Edgenuity platform from a credit recovery, credit recovery. And it essentially is the same every year we roll it over. We anticipate the number of students that will take courses, but we don't essentially know until transcripts are finalized and students actually, um, finish the school year. So this is essentially the same quote. Uh, and their modification, sometimes we have to amend it throughout the year just based off numbers. But it's the annual quote for Edgenuity E 2020.
Any questions for Dr. Green?
I do have a question. I noticed S R three is what's funding this for next year.
Yes, ma'am.
That'll be the last year of funding.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Did we add anything to our contract with them during the S R funding period?
Um, we did, we, uh, because we had Glen Virtual and it was, uh, extensive prior to this particular year. Then there were additional courses, especially in, um, grade six, eight. But we're scaling back the number of courses. We removed middle school from Glen Virtual, so we don't have that volume of courses, um, of courses for sure. But we do often get, um, requests for students to take high school courses and we have steered them towards, um, Glen, uh, the Edgenuity versus Georgia Virtual because of funding. Um, we also at some time have to offer the high school course algebra if there isn't a teacher that's, um, certified in that area. So we do like to keep middle school on, but the number of courses has been drastically reduced for six, eight. Yes, ma'am.
So the plan would be for the 20, what, 24, 25 renewal to continue with that?
Yes, ma'am, it would, it would be. Cause we do see a huge number of kids wanting to take high school courses in middle school. But we are seeing less and less high school certified teachers wanting to be in middle school. And so we do need to have a platform. We, we're fortunate enough that we do have enough high school, um, teachers currently. But we've had to make adjustments mid-year as teachers leave or as they transfer. And then, I mean, we also do get some requests for homeschool students to take courses as well, as well as our, um, hospital homebound. So we, we need the flexibility of having that for six, eight for sure. It cannot go away nine, 12.
Okay, at that point, it would come out of general fund?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It, it, it would come out of my budget.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Weight room at Brunswick High School.
In the old gym at Brunswick High on the stage, there's currently some older weights there. We are looking to upgrade that weight room to make it equivalent to what was built for the auxiliary gym, the weight room there. And this request is for the exact same weight layout and, and types of weights that are in the new auxiliary gym at Glen Academy that we would place on the stage at Brunswick High School. We're currently in the process of redoing the floor on the stage. It was, it's the old tile, so we're actually, starting Monday, we're going to start removing that. We've already got the, the old equipment off there. We're going to remove the old tile and, and paint it and, you know, dress, dress the area up a little bit. But this will be the, uh, weight equipment for that area, again, to make it equivalent to what is newly installed at Glen Academy. And it's 67,000, 134.
Questions?
And it's local capital project funds, not at East Plaza expenditure on that.
Satilla Marsh?
As I'd said before, we're getting ready for the summer work. It's at Satilla Marsh for the renovations and additions there. This is a phase one budget, which essentially includes, uh, rerouting the bus drive, which has to be done so that we can build the new kitchen and add the classes on. We have to completely redo the bus drive as well as, uh, move some stormwater systems and get ready to prepare the building pad so we can start construction. Hopefully in the fall, we'll probably be coming back to you in July to start asking for the actual construction budget. But this budget is more than enough to get us started again with the rerouting of the, uh, of the bus drive and, and doing a lot of the site work that needs to be done in preparation for that. And construction management on that is Pope Construction and we're asking for the amount of, uh, you know, 1,540,000, 966. There is a fairly large contingency in that that, uh, is, is at our discretion to spend. If we run into any complications, that's $250,000 that may not be spent out of this. But we have a lot of utilities to move, light poles, and there's a lot of other things. We're just concerned as we start to move that drive, what, what we may encounter. So we, we did include a fairly large contingency in, in that, just in case we encountered any problems during the summer. Any questions?
And the demolition of the old board office building in Eggmont Street parking. And Tyson is the construction manager on that. We've kind of rolled it into their contract for the, the renovation work they're currently doing on the campus. Uh, the, uh, proposal of GMP is for 977,000, 173. And again, you can see this brings us to a total of 162 parking spaces. This is a totally paved asphalt service with, uh, surface with, with gutters. There has to be a couple of retention areas that we need to build for stormwater drainage. And it is also preserving the big live oak tree that's in the center of the property. So we, uh, we're, we're working around that. Just for comparison purposes, I ran some numbers on the, I guess, the 2016 and 2019 paving. And the price per space on this is actually the same cost as we paid in, I think, 2016. So, uh, we, that was remarkable that the price was, was within that.
Any questions for Mr. Blackaby?
I have a question about that. Is there a plan to put a fence around that, like the Albany Street property? Or, I mean, I know the spaces that are there now are, don't have a fence.
We have not included that in this and, uh, we have not included that as part of, of the discussion at this point.
And going back to what Mr. Halsey said, that will kind of keep the churches from being able to use them on weekends.
Yeah.
Well, if you put a fence, I mean, you can put a fence, but not a gate.
Right.
We don't have plans to do that.
We did not include that in that, we, we could, could look at.
That was, I mean, I wasn't recommending one way or the other.
It's not included. So no, it's not.
Mike, do we, do we look into, um, sorry, I'm sorry. I don't know if this needed with our SROs and with monitors we have driving around campus, but do we ever think about putting like the security type poles there, like panic buttons and that sort of thing in our, in our parking lots as we get all the way from campus?
We have discussed that, we have discussed that and that is actually, we have, there is some state security money that's opened up for individual things. And I believe that is one of the things that, uh, Mr. Blackstone has requested. We, we asked the principal, or Ms. Miller to have a Google document to try to get input from the principals. And in reviewing that, if that is one of the, one of the main items he has requested, not just for that parking lot.
Right.
But, but for Albany Street.
So even if we don't do it, I would suggest like having Tyson, even if it's a contingency, have him run conduit, two, two, whatever you got to run from somewhere out into the parking lot.
Yeah.
Into a box and we will do it in the future or whatever.
And along with that, we do have a fairly large contingency on this. So we do probably have money in there for that. The contingency on this is because we're working in very old city blocks and we find that when you start moving dirt down there, there's no telling what you might find.
You don't have many dead bodies.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blackaby, and that is all I have.
All right, thank you, Dr. Stents. We'll have executive session tonight for all three land legal and personnel. And a tribunal appeal. So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session. So a motion by Ms. Gibbons. Second by Mr. Mansell. All in favor? It's unanimous at 5:56. It's unanimous at 5:56.
Seven minutes.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Mansell, second by, I don't know. Mr. Edgy. All in favor of returning to open session?
It's unanimous at 7:13.
Motion on the floor to adjourn. Motion by Dr. Jürgen. So your second. By Mr. Mansell. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous at 7:13. We adjourn.